Well, to the soundtrack, to the soundtrack.
Good morning, everyone. Good morning. Welcome to our Tuesday meeting of the B O C C. Hopefully, everybody had a good holiday. I don't, nobody approached me today, so we'll just go with the pledge if you want to rise. We'll start with Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. I entertain a review or motion on the minutes.
Mr. Chair, move to approve the minutes of February tenth through the twelfth.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the minutes. Any comments, questions, corrections? She know will call for a vote. Those in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
That's a very term I like.
Before I get into consent agenda, we have a proclamation today. I'll, I'll, I'll read this. This is, you know, if, if you've been attending some of these, you know, this is, this is something a little new for us. Um, we, uh, commission is taking a stance. We'll, we'll ask them to send in what the proclamation is and we'll approve it at, at a, at a workshop meeting and then, then bring it here if we so desire to approve it instead of just, in the past, it's been pretty much a flat no. So this one is, we're emergency support shelter for the month of February, and I'll read through this and I'll give, we have two ladies joined us and I'll give them a chance to, to talk a minute about it. In the matter of declaring, uh, February two thousand twenty-five as teen dating awareness, awareness month in Callis County, whereas teen dating violence is a serious public health issue affecting young people across the United States. And whereas teen dating violence can take many forms, including physical, emotional, sexual and verbal abuse. And whereas one of these, one in three adolescents in the United States experience some form of physical, sexual or emotional abuse from a dating partner. And whereas early intervention and prevention efforts are crucial to breaking the cycle of teen dating violence. And whereas raising awareness about teen dating violence and providing support to victims is essential to creating a safe and healthy environment for all young people. Now therefore be it proclaimed that, uh, Callis County designates the month of February as teen dating violence awareness month in our county. Be it further proclaimed that we encourage all citizens to learn more about teen dating violence and support efforts to prevent and address this critical issue. Be it further proclaimed that we urge all young people to seek help if they are experiencing dating violence to know that they are not alone. Be it further proclaimed that we encourage all schools and community organizations within our county to actively participate in teen dating violence awareness month. By organizing educational workshops, awareness campaign, campaigns and support groups for young people. We urge them to utilize this opportunity to educate students and community members about healthy relationships, the signs of teen dating violence and available resources for support and assistance. Be it further proclaimed that we recognize the vital role, role of local resources in supporting the victims of teen dating violence. We specifically acknowledge emergency support shelter as a valuable resource within our community, offering support services, prevention and education to our community. We encourage anyone affected by teen dating violence to reach out to emergency support shelter or other local support organizations uh, for assistance issued this eighteenth day of February two thousand twenty-five, Board of Calis County Commissioners. And I'll give you a chance to either, is it just you coming up in right up here? And, uh, there should be a button to make sure the green light's on and then it's all yours. And what will, uh, some of this is written like it's a city, so I'll have them change this and then we'll sign to get it over to you. Okay?
Okay, thank you. Good morning. I am an advocate from the emergency support shelter. The mission of the emergency support shelter is to end sexual and domestic violence while providing education, safety and support to our community. The emergency support shelter was established in nineteen seventy-eight as Callis County's first domestic violence assistance program. It has since expanded into several programs. We offer emergency shelter for survivors of domestic violence and their children, free and confidential, domestic violence advocacy, legal advocacy and support for victims of crime and sexual assault. February is National Teen Dating Violence Awareness Month. Here is what we know. Nearly one point five million high school students experience physical abuse from a dating partner in a single year. About one in nine female and one in thirty-six male high school students report having experienced sexual dating violence in the last year. Over seventy percent of women and over sixty percent of men first experience intimate partner violence under the age of twenty-five. One in four women first experienced intimate partner violence prior to the age of eighteen and forty-nine percent experienced rape as a minor. Up to nineteen percent of teens experience sexual or physical dating violence, about half face stalking or harassment, and as many as sixty-five percent report being psychologically abused. Dating abuse is a pattern of destructive behaviors that exerts power and control over a dating partner. While we define dating violence as a pattern, that doesn't mean the first instance of abuse is not dating violence. It just recognizes that dating violence usually involves a series of abusive behaviors over a course of time. Teen dating violence is more common than people think. One in three teens in the U S will experience physical, sexual or emotional abuse by someone they are in a relationship with before they become adults. Teen Dating Violence Awareness Month aims to educate young people on the prevalence of dating violence and how they can prevent it. Thank you.
Oh, thank you for attending. I'm glad we were able to do that.
We appreciate it.
Thank you. And I, I know you're later on the agenda because we also support the emergency support shelter. Okay? Okay, we'll get into consent agenda. Call for bids. We have a call for bids for a steel structural plate arch for the Garlic Road Delaware Creek Fish Passage project. Uh, we're ordering this a little sooner than normal because of the lag times of getting, getting these in. And when you do, anytime we do a, a project that involves a fish bearing stream, there's a limited window that you can actually work in that, in that stream. So, uh, we're getting this, uh, bid out a little bit early so we can make sure there's time that it gets in during the time we can actually work. Uh, agreements, contracts, bid awards, completion project, file contractors for the Hazeldale Slide Repair Project. Agreement with Mark. Agreement with Mark. I'll butcher this. Schreiber, Meyer, to serve as Callis County Hearing Examiner. The cost not to exceed twenty thousand per year. Uh, last year, we actually went through, uh, uh, an RFP and he was the one that, that came out. So this is the second, second year of that. Contract extension to Roche Inc. for the Tower Road Water Main and Juanito Way Booster Pump Station Project. They were, uh, winners of the, of the bid. We had quite a few companies fitting on this project. Total amount is one million, five, forty-nine, six, thirty-one and seventy-six cents. Resolution to approve surety bond for the calendar year of two thousand twenty-four. Board Correspondents, uh, affidavit of posting resume for the month of January. I've explained the, the resume stuff before. When you post, what we're saying is all the, uh, activity that it happened through the Board of Commissioners in public, uh, meetings through the months of January, we're saying we're, we're guaranteeing it. All that stuff has been posted for January. Nothing's left out. Letter from Federal Energy Regulatory Commission regarding order granting extension of time to complete Beaver Bay Campground renovations. Uh, another one from FERC regarding the twelfth consultant safety inspection report on the Yale project. Letter dated two eighteen twenty-five to Gregory Hannan, reappointed him to the Solid Waste Advisory Committee, representing citizens, two-year term that'll run through the end of March two thousand twenty-seven. Uh, letter dated two eighteen twenty-five to William Hoskins, appointed him to the Stormwater Advisory Committee, two-year term that expires the end of December two thousand twenty-six. This is one I think we, we could actually use more people on. Susan, right?
Yes.
Yes. So if anybody has any interest in that, uh, we could use more people on this committee. Letter dated two eighteen twenty-five to Nikki Jolly, appointed her to the Yale Valley Library District Trustee. The five-year term that expires end of February two thousand thirty. We have a series of, let's see, they're all related to the Dyke Road Reconstruction Phase Two. Uh, under eight, A through E is all, uh, construction easements or doing work up on, on the Dyke Road. Vouchers. We have vouchers this weekend, amount of eight million, seven hundred and twenty thousand, six, sixty-five and sixteen cents. That's consent agenda.
Move approval of the consent agenda.
Okay. I got a motion to approve consent agenda. Any questions, comments? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'm being told, since we're new to this, under the proclamations, I should have called for a motion even though we approved it in a workshop formally. Motion here, if I can get with it.
Then I move approval of the proclamation.
Okay, we have a motion, uh, to approve the proclamation for the emergency support shelter. Comments, questions?
I, I do have a question for the young lady that came up and spoke. Is the emergency support shelter doing anything special the month of February with this proclamation that they normally wouldn't do as far as like education, that type of stuff, advocacy and within the community?
We're gonna need you to
Drag you back up to the microphone.
Yeah, otherwise we'll get in texts that can't hear.
There we go. So last week we went out to multiple different schools and we educated the teens um, in the middle schools in Longview, Kelso. We have events scheduled down at Woodland and Calama um, this week and next week where we're educating the middle schoolers on what teen dating violence awareness is. That's not something that we do every month of the year. We really make it a big event. And all of the advocates in our office go down and we take part in educating these teens.
So I understand that resources are, are limited. Um, but can you help me understand if it's as big of a deal as you've stated, which I agree with, it's a problem? Shouldn't we be doing something throughout the year and not just keep it to one month? As far as the education and advocacy portion of it goes?
We should, and what we try to do is educate every single day, um, whether it be our peer-led program that we have going on where, um, we have a prevention specialist now that's educating our teens and what healthy relationships look like that are now peer-led that we kicked off at the beginning of this school year and that's going fantastic. Um, and he's teaching, well, the kids, he's taught high schoolers to teach their peers on what healthy relationships look like. And so that's something that takes place every week, twice a week. And so that is something that will continue, be ongoing. Um, as the program grows and the funding is there, I think there's bigger plans in the future on getting back into the schools and keeping this, uh, uh, appealing to a bigger population within the schools.
Hmm. Um, I think what you guys do is great. My, our, my youth organization through church, we've gone and painted the walls at your place and worked on your kids playground stuff and that kind of thing. Um, can you, can you help, help me understand as far as this proclamation goes, why you think it's a good thing to have a proclamation and declare this the month of February, uh, for this purpose and what the, what you see the advantage to it is?
For me, I think that educating any of our teens and making sure that they know that teen dating violence is never okay. I don't think it's something that is very much talked about. And although it's one month that's dedicated to education, it's something that we do all year long. And really being able to bring the focus and highlighting that during one month out of the year and saying, hey, although we're doing small things throughout the year, this is the month that we actually get to show like what this is all about and, um, to hope that we can stop teen dating violence at least with one person, if not hundreds.
But, but how does this proclamation help you? If you never had it, you're still gonna focus on the month of February. You're still gonna do all those things. How does this proclamation help you?
I think that allowing the county commissioners here, signing it, um, it just brings more awareness and it gets the word out there in a bigger fashion than what we can reach ourselves.
So when you talk about the events that you put on at the schools, i- is it, uh, how, how much more is it than just reciting the statistics that you recited to us?
We actually don't recite the statistics to the kids. We interact with them. We have a tabling event. They take a pledge that they read, they sign, they, uh, participate in an activity so they fully understand what kind of a pledge that they are taking. We come here with our statistics to get the word out there on, on how much of an impact this is having on our kids. But when we go into the schools, we make it appropriate for them where they understand what teen dating violence is.
What, what kind of examples or, or information do you put in front of them so they understand what that is?
We give them opportunities to play games or like spin the wheel or ant have, uh, note cards where they can ask, where we ask them questions like what is stalking? Do you know what that is? Or, uh, bullying on social media. We are trying to get them to understand, you know, what gaslighting is. And so, um, being able to ask them the questions, have them tell us what their definition is and then be able to educate on what the appropriate definition is, is something that we do.
So this is all just a verbal communication back and forth? There's no slideshow or video demonstration or showing them anything off of the internet?
No, sir.
Okay.
Okay. Other questions? I, it looks like there is.
In the public school environment, are you able to engage faith-based foundation of the Lord created us not to be violated in the beautiful body, or none?
No.
Outside, outside of the schools, do you?
I can't answer that. I don't know the answer to it.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you once again.
This is one that I've got a lot of, um, disjointed thoughts on and it kind of comes back to what's the real role of government. And what we're talking about, at least in my mind, is a cultural, social, personal behavior problem. And to me, that starts at the home and, and Steve, you mentioned churches. To me, that's the place where these things need to be addressed. And, uh, we have so many proclamations on this month and that month and everything else that I couldn't, I, I totally ignore them all because there's so many of them. So, um, I, I, yeah, I guess from an awareness point of view, but it seems to me that the government or some, some, uh, government agency, which is basically what, what emergency support shelter is because of the funding, uh, that seems to me, um, that's the last resort just ahead of law enforcement action. So some, somehow it's a family, it's a church, faith-based, some, some kind of, that's, that's to me where the nub of this whole thing is. So that's just kind of my thoughts. Like I say, I'm kind of disjointed on the whole thing and I'm kind of get lost in all these, you know, proclamations for this and that and everything else.
Okay. Any other? Seeing none, call for a vote. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. We head into motion items. Public Works, I see a couple of them here.
Good morning. Susan Eugenius, County Engineer. Uh, the first item we have on the agenda today is the bid award, uh, to Tapney Incorporated for the Tudor wastewater treatment plant improvement project. Uh, the total award amount is one million, four hundred and ninety-two dollars, one, four hundred and ninety-two thousand, three hundred and twenty-eight dollars and ninety cents. Uh, we opened these bids on February fifth. Um, we received a total of eight bidders. The low bid is approximately ninety-two thousand below the engineer's estimate and the next two bidders were clumped very closely together. We have reviewed all their documentation and found them the lowest responsible bidder for this project.
Okay. You entertain a motion if you so desire.
I move approval of item number nine on the motion agenda.
Okay, we have a motion to, uh, prove Tapney for their, the bid. Any questions, comments? Seeing nothing, we'll call for a vote. Those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Item ten.
Item ten is amendment number two to the professional services agreement with Gibson Olsen uh, to add inspection, a construction inspection and engineering services for the Tudor wastewater treatment plant improvements. Uh, the total cost of the contract would not exceed four hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars. This, uh, includes the new services and the design phase. Uh, we set our construction projects up in this manner quite frequently, uh, where we have the design phase and we amend their contract to add what construction services we need. In this case, we've requested extensive, uh, daily inspections, uh, which is not our norm. And that is due to the fact, um, that our inspection, uh, group is not an expert on mechanical equipment. Plus, we have quite a few large public works projects this summer, so we've requested Gibson Olsen provide a daily inspection of this project in addition to their normal submittal reviews.
I approve, uh, I move approval of number ten, amendment number two to the professional services agreement with Gibson Olsen.
Okay, we have a motion to, uh, prove the extension for Gibson Olsen. This is basically, we're asking them to do services that we, we don't feel we, we have the level of expertise to make sure it's, it's done.
Correctly, yes.
Any questions, comments on this, this one?
And, and Susan, for the public's sake, this is something that we typically do. It's just that in this circumstance, the amount of money is a little bit larger than normal.
Yes, we typically have them review submittals for us, but the daily inspection is done by county staff. So it's just a larger scope than normal.
Okay. Seeing none, call for a vote. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Susan.
Thank you.
Gina, HHS.
Hey, good morning. Gina James, Health and Human Services. We have a few items on the agenda this morning. Item eleven is, uh, agreement with Housing Opportunities of Southwest Washington, or some folks know it better as Longview Housing Authority. And this, uh, contract is to provide case management for residents who are staying at the Phoenix House. It's often residents with their children. Um, the Phoenix House is a program that is for individuals who have completed inpatient substance use treatment program and are now, have completed that program and they're moving back into the community. Um, and so the Phoenix House is a program where they can return to the community, um, away from their, you know, prior environments, uh, to get back on their feet. So the case management services through this contract work with the individuals to develop a self-sufficiency plan and then work on the goals in that plan so they can kind of get reestablished in the community and eventually, um, move out and be independent on their own. So this contract's, um, not to exceed a hundred and thirty-three thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. Um, this is for, uh, a one-year period. Um, and primarily funded with our grant from Washington State Department of Commerce.
This is the, be the second year that, that they've handled Phoenix.
Correct.
I'm trying to remember who did it for years before and
It was Family Health Center.
Okay, and then, uh, Ozawa took this over last year.
Yes.
And this second year then, I think we're trying to get them in on Wednesday because when they came in for this, they, they looked at making some changes. To my recollection, they wanted to move people through the system faster. So I think they're gonna give us an update on.
Yeah, they'll be, we're looking, she just sent me a couple of dates in March, so we're looking at, um, a work session in March and they can come in and share a little bit more about the program and what it's looking like for them. Yeah.
Just a little question on our services. Is that, is there some state protocol that they have to meet in, in doing this under uh, the professional services and tracking results, et cetera, so that uh, you at least representing us know that, that we're getting, you know, that it's for the best for the people and good for the county?
Yeah, so they, they're, they look at their, the state doesn't look at this. Phoenix, at the Phoenix House, they're always looking at their self-sufficiency plan and if they're making progress, individuals are making progress on those plans. If they've, are able to make sure they stay connected to their treatment, um, look at employment or schooling, things like that, that they're always working towards those pieces. This, this particular program falls under what's called a services-only project, so the, the state doesn't, um, look at it very closely because, um, it's considered services only. It's not paying for a housing unit, um, which is where the state really kind of drills in on if they're paying for a housing unit. Um, so I apologize, that's probably kind of a confusing answer. Um, but we do look at But we do look at, and we also look at their, they submit quarterly reports to us that kind of talk about those things in terms of the individuals who have their self-sufficiency plans done, and if they're making progress on those plans. And that's certainly something when they come in, in March, that we'll make sure they touch on.
Right, so one of the important parts would be, you've mentioned children that are part of this. So making sure that the children are going to school and getting their things, trying to break the cycle that can go on.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, absolutely. And there's, there's a lot of reunification that happens while individuals are at the Phoenix House. So oftentimes, the kids have had to be, you know, taken away for a period of time while parent can complete their treatment programs, and now they're being re-unified and, and getting stabilized in this program.
Gina, real quick, I know that you, with regards to budgets for, you know, places that we give money to, you, you look at that budget and then you guys go back and forth on what you think is acceptable and what is not acceptable previous to them receiving this money. Do you do the same thing, and can we do the same thing with regards to, for example, the services that they offer? Knowing what the board's position is on certain things, can we say, hey, we're giving you this money, we would like to see more or less of these things offered within your program?
Yeah, absolutely. And that's part of it is, you know, that's why we have a contract, right? Because then we can say, these are the things we're looking for, and they're committing to doing those things. That would be a great conversation to have once we get an opportunity, once new commissioners get an opportunity to learn more from them in March when they come. That would be some great dialogue to have. And if there are certain things that you'd like to see that you didn't hear were happening, then that'd be a great conversation to have. Yeah.
So I'd, hey, so I'd be curious as to, how many roughly do you help with this amount of money? Hundred and thirty-three thousand, right?
Yeah, so at any given time, there's about 20 adults, 20 kids staying at the project.
Any other questions, comments? You entertain a motion?
I move approval of item number 11.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the agreement with Housing Opportunities of Southwest Washington in an amount of 133,250. Last chance. Okay, call for a vote. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item 12.
Okay, item 12 is a contract agreement with Emergency Support Shelter. This is specifically for shelter operations. So, and there are sheltering of individuals who are fleeing domestic violence. This contract is $150,000. There's 100,000 supporting basic shelter operations, and the last few years, we've included a 50,000 match component. So we'll match what's, what is donated through private donations. We will match up to 50,000 in that. This is also a one-year agreement. This one is funded with document recording fees. The reason for that, there's a, a percentage of our document recording fees that has to be used for three or four really specific interventions. Shelter operations is one of those, and so we use that, that percentage of the document recording fee towards this contract. They're also in the room if we have any questions specifically for.
Do you know what that percentage is?
It is, I want to say 15%. I'd have to look at the document, the statute to make sure that that's correct. But yes, it's a percentage of the document recording fees that, that are specific to housing and homeless services.
How many people do we have in that shelter at any given time? Do you know?
Yeah, sure. I know it's changed over the years. So any given time, the shelter can house up to eight different families currently with their children. But we're hoping to expand those services to open up a few more rooms now that post-COVID and the need has continued to increase.
What constitutes a family?
So it could be a mother or a mother and her children, either, either one. So we have single women who come in, or we have women who come in with their children.
Is there a maximum number of children?
We don't have a maximum number of children that can come with each family. I think the most we've had stay in the shelter at one time is five children with one mother. And the, correct me if I misspeak on anything, it's a shorter-term stay, up to 90 days. And so when we look back, so from HMIS, just looking back at a year period in 2024, it looks like over 100 individuals were served, which was close to about 61 households.
Do you know what the cost per individual is for a 90-day stay?
For, about per family, for about a 90-day stay, it's about $1,500.
So it's $1,500 whether it's a single mother or a mother with three kids?
No, single mother. Sorry, just a single mother, just about for food. Yeah.
So, just so I understand, $1,500 per person?
Mm-hmm, for, per mother, and then depending if they have different families or how many children come in. Each family has really different needs. So when each family comes in, we're trying to assess what needs they have for clothing, for food. Are we, you know, we providing more? Do they have some access to those in other areas? Some mothers come in with employment, some don't. So each family is really different, and the needs really range depending on the families that are, that are coming in.
Okay. So do, do you have a baseline to say, let's just say we're talking about clothing and food, what it costs per individual, $1,500?
I mean, I can kind of give you an estimate. I mean, and I can give you more specific numbers too. But I mean, even just to keep the lights on in the shelter as a whole, for, I mean, about four months, we're looking even just about $3,000, $3,500 just to keep the lights on in the shelter as a whole for about three months. So, but depending on the families, it, it really, it estimates on the needs of them coming in again, and what they, what they need and the services that we're providing them.
A couple of questions here. The terminology here, who are at risk of domestic violence? That's kind of a nebulous term that you would have someone coming in that feels that risk. Now, those that are fleeing violence would be another thing. So do, does law enforcement have to be engaged in some way or another that they've had a claim or whatever, or it's basically a kind of a relationship of them sharing their situation?
Yeah, it's a great question. So law enforcement does not have to be involved. The women can come and share what they've experienced, and we work with them directly, one-on-one.
Okay, so law enforcement is not necessarily engaged then?
They don't have to be. So if the, if the clients choose that they want to involve law enforcement, we help them along the way. Sometimes they come in as a referral from law enforcement, but we do have clients that come in just on their own. So it's not a requirement for them to seek shelter.
Thank you.
My question is, do we have a program for abused husbands who have kids?
Yeah, it's a great question. So our program, our domestic violence program serves all individuals in Calhoun County. This motion right here for this agreement is specifically for a shelter. So our shelter serves women who are fleeing intimate partner domestic violence, just for the shelter. But our agency as a whole does serve men who are fleeing domestic violence with children. They just cannot stay in our shelter. But we do help them access other safe places to stay, housing resources, vouchers, safety planning, and they do get that support as well.
Okay, what is the percentage of men who have the problem?
That's, I can get you that answer. I don't have it in front of me right now, but I can go back and grab that data.
Okay, I'm just kind of curious. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? I think, three years ago, I think we used to give 100,000 just outright, and then we wanted to give more, but we wanted some, to make sure that it didn't come at the expense of donations, so we attached it to the match fund. And I think that's been, hopefully they're happy with it. I know we felt that that's been successful. We wanted to make sure the public was still involved also.
Yeah, yeah, that was.
In this shelter, yeah.
Yeah, that was part, I remember part of that conversation being, you know, if there's private donations coming in up to a certain amount, the community is pretty supportive of emergency support shelter, and so then decided to match some of that, so, yeah.
So we're matching up to 50,000?
Right.
So you guys have received 50,000 outside of what we're giving you?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that's good.
Yeah, and we're very grateful for your support. Thank you.
Hi, just a real short question. I've got a reputation of being frugal, to the nth degree, I understand, and I, I kind of enjoy it. But for $500 a month, I think that's a little excessive. Could you tell me why 500? I could feed a whole family on $500 a month. So what is this getting, that one person?
For that one individual into the shelter?
Yes, because I'm sure that FISH would donate food.
Yeah.
And you have Lions, so the food issue would be a whole lot less. Clothing, I'm sure that you have donations from Goodwill and then other places, so that would be less. So basically, you're saying that you're having to pay a large amount of money to educate these ladies? And I really think that that could be shaved as well.
Yeah, that's a great question. And so we work really closely with a lot of our community partners. So we do work with agencies like FISH. We have Red Hat, who's an organization under us for clothing. But regardless, it is our job when these women come in to us to make sure they have everything that they need, and that's 24/7. And so it's really important that our shelter is always staffed. Some women come most of the time with, with nothing, with the clothes on their back. So the food that we have is essentials, like milk, egg, cheese, things that we do buy to keep sure that, make sure that it's stocked. Hygiene items, clothing, undergarments, and a lot of those, we do work with our community partners. But sometimes there are things that we do need to have available and accessible to them at all times. Things like, and it, you know, things like laundry soap, toilet paper, things like that, that keep the shelter operations running. Things like hygiene products, you know, those kinds of things that are really difficult to get from community partners. Those are important for us, that we have those for the families and for the children as well. So diapers, wipes, things like that, that we do very grateful for support from the community. But the need that we have coming in is always evolving. And so it's important to us that we have those stocks at all times. But even when we have those, our food budget is very frugal, right? So we provide what's essential, and then we, we help the women try to get on, you know, if it's EBT or connect them to other resources. But you know, even having things for a child's birthday, you know, to celebrate that with them. Things like that, just the bare essentials. But we do work with those community partners to, to make it last longer.
Oh, I appreciate your, your effort in doing all that. So basically, what you're saying is the, the amount isn't necessarily 15 with all your donations and, and, and everything you get. Most of the time, it's less than 15 then, correct?
Yeah, it's, it's very difficult for me to give that exact number, because give or take, but yes, depending on the size of the family, the children, the needs, and the, the resources the mother has coming in.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
I think another way to, to phrase the question for myself is, what, what's your percentage, what, what's your administrative cost?
Yeah, it's a really good question, and I can get the exact data for you. I just don't have it in front of me right now. And just for purposes of this particular contract, it's 10%. Our, this contract, we pay 10% admin costs towards the program. So that doesn't mean that, you know, their, their whole program, it might look different, but for this contract, it's up to 10%. Yeah.
Up to?
Up to 10%.
Okay, good.
Well, if there's no more questions, then I'm going to approve, move approval of item number 12.
Okay, we have a motion to move approval of item number 12 to Emergency Support Shelter. Any last questions or comments? Seen nothing? Call for a vote. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Thank you. Thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming today. 13, 14, 15. My colleagues how we want to handle this, but it's all like the same, same type item.
Yes, items 13, 14, and 15 are contracts specifically for coordinated entry services. We have a contract with Community House on Broadway, Emergency Support Shelter, and Calhoun Family Health Center. These are the entities we've worked with for the last several years for coordinated entry. And just really briefly, coordinated entry is a way to, for individuals who are experiencing homelessness to connect, get some, give some basic information about their housing status. And then it sort of gets them on a, gets their information in the system. We occasionally have housing referrals that can, can be drawn from coordinated entry and who's connected with coordinated entry. So we're occasionally able to connect those individuals then to a housing referral. That's the primary purpose of coordinated entry. They also do a lot of mainstream referrals to services in the community that you don't, you're not on a wait list or anything like that, that individuals can try to connect with more readily. So we've, like I said, we've historically worked with these agencies. We'd like to continue working with these agencies. We have adjusted some of the contract amounts a little bit here as we did an RFP process and had some discussion with, with the agencies. These will be primarily funded with our grant with the Department of Commerce. So we'll continue to do that and, and move forward. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Now, there are some programs that if these individuals do not go through coordinated entry, then they don't have access to the program, right?
That's correct.
So, so this is a step that must be taken for some.
To get into some.
For some stuff.
Yeah, yeah, it's primarily the HIN program is, there's a housing component if you're eligible for HIN, and you have to go through coordinated entry in order to get a referral. There's a couple other programs too, where, you know, they call us and say, we need a referral from coordinated entry, and we send them a referral. So yes, there's certain programs that this is the only way that you can get into those programs.
It's a reimbursement program. It's, we're not sending Community House the money or anybody the money.
Right.
Reimbursement, and we're also working with, we expect CAP will be part of this too.
We're having some conversation with CAPS. They had also submitted a proposal through the RFP. So we're having some ongoing discussions with them about what that might look like.
About how many people does this help in here, do you know?
We see anywhere from 1,000 to 1,200 people that connect with coordinated entry. We end up sort of gathering that more in-depth information with about 800 of those individuals. When we look at the actual referrals to housing, it's about 10% of that, depending on the projects. That's not a reflection of coordinated entry itself. That's because those were just the openings that the projects had. So when they get an opening, then they reach out and pull a referral from coordinated entry.
Okay. Gina, does the coordinated entry program make it to where benefits aren't duplicated? You know what I mean? They can't go to one, go to another, and get benefits from these, these different places? Does that program help with that?
Coordinated entry itself doesn't have any, we don't give out a benefit in coordinated entry. And so they could go to one agency, go through the coordinated entry process, they could go to another agency, and they're essentially going to get the same information they've already gotten. So there's not a direct, there's not a benefit that we're handing out in the moment. You'll get mainstream services, information on mainstream services. It's about seven pages of resources that you can look through and connect with. So in that sense, they're, they're going to get the same response, no matter which agency they connect with, and the same information. And there's not, and we know we're not handing out like hotel vouchers or anything like that, that someone's getting where they could go to one and then maybe get another one from another one. So.
So, so help me understand then, exactly what service is it providing if we're not handing that out, if there's no subsidy for anything?
Yeah, so they'll, they gather some basic information. It gets inputted into a Yeah, so they'll, they gather some basic information. It gets inputted into a database. That's essentially where we look, we'll look in that database when a referral opens um and send information based on that. That's how we know that someone's eligible for a project, that they meet some of the program requirements, so that there'll be a good referral for that project. Um, so aside from that potential referral, they'll get information on a variety of mainstream services that they can connect to um in the community, anything from, you know, food resources, transportation, clothing, um substance use, mental health. They'll get all of that info, resource information that they can go and try to connect to. Other case management services, those types of things.
Okay.
Information on shelter. Yeah.
Is it somewhat accurate to to say it's almost kind of like a screening process?
It, that's exactly what it is.
Walking through your door and you screen them all?
Yeah, yeah. That's that's exactly what it is. Because like I mentioned, the primary purpose is to be able to get some basic information so we can get good referrals to those projects. And so we collect the information that's needed to know if they're, you know, income eligible, are they a veteran, those really specific pieces that will help us to know if they qualify for one of those projects. Yeah.
Are the organizations that coordinated entry people are sending these people to for these resources? Is coordinated entry the only way to get to those resources? Or can anybody just get to those resources?
Um, when I'm talking about mainstream services, that's just open to anyone. And so um, it would be, you know, the same resources that you and I could go and connect with out in the community for the most part. Um, the housing, the specific housing referrals are limited and very specific. So not everybody is able to go and connect with with those.
Sorry?
Uh, Gina, we're talking about the full population of homeless people would go through any one of these three and potentially cap when it comes on?
Mm hmm.
Okay, uh, one of the things we know about homeless population, it there's a whole variety of reasons that people end up being homeless. All the way from economic to drug addicted to mental health. Those are the people that would be coming through this.
Yes.
Okay, what are the qualifications of the people that are doing this assessment or screening?
Um, it varies. We don't, we don't specify specific like educational qualifications in our contract. They do have to go through a series of trainings before they can work directly with individuals. And so um, there is a set of trainings um that they have to go through and complete before they are able to do the screenings um with individuals.
So we could have somebody come into that program that has a mental health problem that would never be able to maintain themselves in any kind of a home a home setting. And we don't have a professional way with somebody qualified to assess that at the beginning of the process. Is that what you're saying?
So it may not happen right then and there in the moment, but two of the agency, Family Health Center and Community House also offer behavioral health services. And so in that situation, right, if someone comes in and they um are in crisis and are wouldn't be able to kind of complete the coordinated entry screening piece and may have other needs that are more more pressing, um they should be connecting them with mental health resources at that point. It'd be similar to, you know, if somebody came into a food bank in crisis, that those individuals probably aren't qualified, right, to do a mental health or behavioral health assessment or screening. But hopefully they're encouraging people to connect with the most appropriate resource for that.
Uh, the people that that are tied to these assessments, uh, the three that you've mentioned here in CAP, uh, the those four agencies, are they some in any way reimbursed either by the county or another agency uh depending on their headcount in their program?
Based on headcount?
Yeah.
No. No.
Okay. So there's two things, uh, three things I'm getting at. Number one, uh, to send people that are in some level of crisis all over town from this agency to that agency is very um um inefficient and you probably lose people on the way. Uh, the second thing is you're dealing with very serious problems that people have got. And um several of us put together a white paper, uh, which everybody in this room has seen. And one of the things that we were advocating and wanted to explore was a centralized um intake process where you had qualified people. So everybody came to the same place. They were assessed by people with the right credentials, professionals.
Mm hmm.
You know, not, uh, you know, whatever all the rest of us would be.
Mm hmm.
So that you got a proper assessment to begin with. And uh then then we get to those people then to the right agencies to begin with. And basically hand carry in there rather than just say, well, okay, uh, you start here, now you gotta go all the all the way over here to talk to this individual and then there and everywhere else. And I don't think from a from a overall efficiency and really helping the people we're trying to help, that's a very, very good way of doing it. So I'm raising, I'm raising the issue that we ought to be professional in that approach. And it needs to be centralized in one place. And I don't know if that's the county running that or, you know, how we do that. But um, this shotgun where everybody jumps in says, well, I want to do that. Um, I I really don't think that's the way to go. And I think we need to real look, take a, take a real hard look at that.
Yeah.
And then we tie that together with the work that, you know, you guys are starting to do on the mental health thing. You know, I understand you want to start with a youth, you know, which is fine. But that doesn't do anything for all the other adults
Mm hmm.
that have that problem that are wandering from agency to agency and and wasting not only their time, but wasting a lot of people's time and probably resources. So my thought is uh, we really need to take a look at that before we just add another, okay, well, now we're going to have another agency doing some assessments by a layman as opposed to somebody professionally trained to understand mental health, to understand the drug addiction and get them headed in the right direction to begin with, rather than, you know, kind of happenstance.
Yeah, and some of the history behind coordinated entry, we um, we did have a centralized model several years ago and ended and where we worked with just one agency and there was sort of a hub created um where individuals only went to that one location. We decided that as the county decided to shift away from that model and start working with multiple agencies. Um, and, you know, for a lot of different reasons. Um, and I think it has worked well for purposes of coordinated entry. I think maybe what what you're getting at probably goes a little beyond the scope of coordinated entry. Um, because for coordinated entry, we're really just looking at, you know, getting the some of that basic information so we can make a good referral to those housing programs. But if we're talking about doing behavioral health assessments and trying to get people connected to behavioral health services in that sense, I think that probably goes a little bit um above coordinated, the the scope of coordinated entry specifically, but I certainly don't disagree with having a centralized way for people to connect to Dreamline.
Of of all the people that come into coordinated entry, how many of them do you, would you say end up being referred for mental health? On a percentage basis?
I'm not sure. I I could go back and look at some of our data um for that particular piece.
I'm happy with just a rough guess. Is it fifty percent?
I would probably say at least fifty percent that, you know, and it's based off what individuals tell you, right? So it's you know, that it, we would only capture that if they're saying, I want to connect with mental health resources. Um, and, you know, we, as staff, might have other thoughts about what they might need to connect, you know, the services that might be most appropriate, but it's based on what they connect, what they share with you um in the moment. But I would say there there's certainly a lot of um mental health and substance use issues and they kind of go hand in hand um for people that are connecting.
Okay. My turn. Hey, so I've always been curious about this. It's been going on for a while. And the question I have is like, okay, so I'm a homeless Joe and I go to one of these coordination centers. They take some information from me. And then where do I go? I'm just back on the street, right? And then I've got my Obama phone. And then I wait for a phone call. Is that how it works? Do you, I mean, how many of these people just disappear before you can ever help them?
It's, that does happen. That absolutely happens. What we, so what what they should be getting information on shelter resources. So if you do come in and you're living on the street currently, you should be getting information and where Community House is, if you're fleeing violence where ESS is. So you should be getting those that information so you can go and try to, you know, get shelter that night if you can. Um, we also encourage individuals to check back with coordinated entry every ninety days or so just to stay updated on what your situation is, if it's changed, if it hasn't changed, that type of thing. But it does happen, you know, people float around.
Would be a rough number on the people that are calling you back after ninety days.
It's actually pretty high. It is. Um, if, and it it surprises me a little bit, but it, um, you know, they connect, they'll connect back in and we just update their information and
Back on the street.
And or they go and try to connect with shelter.
We obviously don't have housing for a lot of these people that are just generally homeless, right? I mean, like the people down at the, that they are gazebo, you know what I mean? Like the the general population there that doesn't have a house waiting for them somewhere or some sort of housing. So so they come to the coordinated entry and you take their information, you know, I just live on the street. Don't have any other problems, just homeless. So then you're just waiting on the street. I mean, it's just like, I've always been curious is how do you reconnect with somebody in that situation? I mean, how do you go find them? You know, it's like, are you just sitting at the desk and all of a sudden a fax comes through and it's like, oh, we got a house for this guy, you know what I mean? And how do you find him?
If their, if their phone number, if they left a phone number, if their phone number doesn't work, we'll, we'll, we'll look in the state database, the homeless management information system, because that will show us if they have gone into shelter or if they're staying um in an, in another project, if they happen to connect with one. So then we'll know they went somewhere. Um, but we can also um work with, like, Family Health Center has a homeless outreach team. And so we'll sometimes say, you know, be able to connect with them, hey, have you
Seen this guy, right?
Yeah, exactly. So there's a little bit of that that might happen as well to try to track people down.
Okay, really quick. Now, you ran through some numbers in the beginning. I didn't quite catch the last one, the success rate number, you know, it came out as a percentage.
Yes. And so I'm gonna when I talk about that number, it's not a success rate for coordinated entry. It's just a reflection of the openings in the housing projects. So that number was ten percent. Um, so it was, there's about a thousand to twelve hundred individuals that just make initial contact with coordinated entry. We do sort of the screening with about eight hundred of those. Um, and then about ten percent, give or take, end up with a housing referral and that's in a year period.
Okay, so.
And again, that's, that's not a
People then.
That's not a
Is that right?
Success of coordinated entry. That's just the housing openings.
Sure. So that's eighty. Right? That would be the number.
Yeah.
Ten percent of eight hundred. Eighty, yeah. Thank you for that. I'm not very good at math. I don't like those like this.
Don't do math in public. Commissioner Weber always said that. Don't do math in public meetings.
Yeah, exactly. That's I I remember saying that. That's why I try not to do it.
Let me pursue another connection then. So what is your relationship with the support services here with Have Hope in Longview? They have fifty shelters. The Salvation Harmony is managing. Is that a completely separate or the, is that incorporated into the process? Again, Longview will be coming to these commissioners and to us for money at mid-year or so to support their programs too.
Yeah, so Family Health Center goes down to Hope Village, I think once a week to connect with individuals who maybe haven't connected with coordinated entry yet. And so their information is getting updated regularly. Um, and then we also, because they also use HMIS, if we are looking for somebody who's up for a referral, we can check to see if they're at Hope Village so we know where to, where to find them for the referral.
So is that considered a success if you get them into Hope Village or if you get them beyond Hope Village?
So we don't get them into Hope Village. That is separate. Hope Village doesn't take referrals from coordinated entry in that sense. So there are not one of the required projects that only does referrals from coordinated entry. It's, that's completely separate. Um, but coordinate entry does connect with them as a project, just to make sure that we're um, working, that we, the individuals staying there have connected with coordinated entry. And like I mentioned, if we end up pulling a referral and it's someone who's staying in Hope Village, we will be able to see that so we know where the individual is.
Okay, so there is some interrelationship, but, okay, thank you.
Gina, I just want to say, uh, I'm amazed at how much you know about all of this and your wealth of knowledge. Thank you. It really is. It's amazing to see. So are we, there definitely is some sort of common template or intake form, if you will, with these organizations that we're giving this money to.
Mm hmm.
They all use the same one?
Yep, yep.
And then these organizations that they're referring to have access to that information. So it really is somewhat coordinated. It's not just, they didn't just name it that.
Right, yeah. And we play, we play a role in it as well. So um, the agent, these three agencies are connecting directly with individuals. When they enter that data in the system, we see that as soon as it's entered in. And when there's an opening, a housing opening, we're the ones that are contacted at HHS where the agencies will say, hey, HHS, we need two referrals. We have openings and we'll go through um the system and identify the individual for the referral. Um, but the other agencies can see that as well. So when they, like I mentioned, if someone, you know, goes to Community House and then they go to Family Health Center, Family Health Center would say, hey, you just connected with coordinate, you know, you just connected with coordinated entry and just did all this. Did you need to update your information or did something change? And you know, they'll do that, but they won't go through the whole thing again. Yeah.
How do you prioritize who you're going to call? Are they first come, first served always? Or is it uh judgment call?
So the way it works, there's uh, the questions that are asked are two-part. One, as I mentioned, I are specific to the housing projects. And so um, you know, are you a veteran? Do you, what's your income level? So there's certain pieces that are requirements for housing ref, the housing projects we refer to. Um, we also look at a couple other things, like if there's children in the family, um, that gets um in the system, it's it's scored. And so we're able to um sort and filter based on the housing project and what their requirements are. And then we look at other factors like number of children in the home. Is there um age? Is there medical um issues going on? So there's some of those pieces um that are considered as well.
Okay, thank you.
First off, I want to commend you for the, all the hassle that you you go through to get these people housed and taken care of because I I know it's extensive. Um, but going through the figures, there's a whole lot of people that aren't, that don't meet the requirements, but yet they're, they're really in hard times.
Mm hmm.
And they're not going to go to Hope Village or they're not going to go to community because they aren't going to quite make that either. They're on the cusp of being eligible for those. What can we do for them and what do we have for them?
Well, it's hard. And when I, we talk about those numbers, there's, there's a lot of programs out there that aren't reflected in those numbers, right? So there's a lot of projects that are completely outside of this process, like Oxford Housing or um, yeah, there's all kinds of program, other programs.
Okay, okay.
And so individuals may be connecting with those programs and, you know, we wouldn't know that necessarily. Uh, we just know who connects with coordinated entry and if we end up referring them to one of these specific projects. Um, but there are a lot of individuals out there that may not qualify for a project or may not be ready to go into a project that has certain parameters, right? If they're not ready to follow certain rules or
Right.
or what have you, then um, then they wouldn't meet those, that eligibility for those projects. And so um, that's, I think that's probably what you're getting at is there's a population that um may not be able to be served in that sense or or might be better off may not be able to be served in that sense, or, or might be better off being connected to mental health or behavioral health, or we hope that they might be ready to commit to something different, but.
All I know is that, when you mention all the figures that you've mentioned, and I, I see a lot of people right now, because we are having financial economic problems and, and they're just right on the cusp of not, you know, just not making it. And I know we have a lot of churches and things that are, are, you know, they're, they're trying very hard to meet those, those needs as well. But I, I wasn't aware of the other programs that would, that are, for the people that are not quite there, but just one step above, but any, any day, they could be down, but they, they just need, I guess guidance is the word, education on how to, to improve their living condition. And maybe Mr. Wood, maybe his ability to have the $600 a month housing would be, would be great. But I think there's a real need for that. I mean, like I say, they're one step above. They're not going to make what, what you, you know, but they're still in dire need. But thank you. I didn't realize that there were other, other programs as well. Yeah.
Flo, I think to your, to your comment about that, I, I can speak to the fact that there are, for those particular individuals, there are a lot of churches within our community that help those particular people that don't fit into this, into the mold for the qualifications for these programs. And I would really say that that, to me personally, I really believe that that's where the responsibility lies within our community. I don't know that it's the, I don't know to what extent it's the government's role to, to fund all of these different programs that we've got going on. But I can tell you that I, I feel that we can work with those churches within our community to help them. Maybe not necessarily with money, but with other, other resources and services, where to go to and coordinate with other people. That's one of the areas that I see, because I've worked with that for the last four and a half years now, with helping people in that situation. And one of the things that we do, when I help somebody with rent or when I help them with a, a deposit on their apartment is I, I don't just give it to them, because I want them to have a sense of dignity as a human being to say, hey, I didn't, just, I'm not a charity case, but I need help. I give them the opportunity to come and clean the parking lot, come and, come and clean the church, to provide service for what the, for the, the endowment that they're receiving, if you will. And, and that's one of the things I'd like to see more of in our community, not just churches handing stuff out, but ask, actually maybe requiring something of these people that are getting some of these services for their own self dignity, to help them get back on their feet, to feel good about, you know, the situation that they're in. Cause everybody falls on hard times. I'm not saying that we, we shouldn't help people out. But I, I think we need to identify the role that we play as, as a government, what we want to do, and also to help the, the churches and the charity organizations within our, our communities to fulfill that role.
Okay.
Okay. I'm going to step in a little bit because we're starting to get beyond the scope of coordinated entry here. This is a great discussion. If you want to have it in public meeting, I'm more than happy to, to do that. But we're on task here a little bit. So I'll take a little chairman prerogative and get us back on, onto that. You have something on the coordinated entry?
Yes. I want to, want to hammer away on the professionalism required and kind of an example of, I think that we've all forgotten. And my intent is not to find fault with any individual, because everybody that's involved in this homeless thing is doing everything they know how to do in this community. So it doesn't come, come around to picking on anybody or any entity. I want to go back to the transition from Camp Alabama version one to Camp Alabama version two, which is called Hope Village. And I, for those of us that have physically walked through Camp Alabama version one and saw the people and the conditions and the, the, the mental, the drug addiction, I mean, the terrible conditions that those people were in. And we had a layman, the city of Longview had a layman doing an assessment. I think there was 110 people, if I remember the number right. And after that, a layman's assessment, 100% of those people were, became eligible for Camp Alabama version two. And the, and what Camp Alabama version two was going to do was not even defined. So there was no, if we had a professional, trained professional doing those assessments, we would have separated, separated out or identified the ones that needed mental help, the ones that needed drug addiction, the ones that were ready to go to Camp Alabama version two, whatever the function of that was going to be. But we see, we never had that. And so we ended up with this big mixture and a lot of wasted time and money in Camp Alabama version two. And I don't, I'm assuming they've worked their way through that by now. But that's the importance to me of having a professional, single space, you know, single place where everybody comes together. And I even think about today, if a police officer, you know, he doesn't, he's out there, comes across somebody on the street that he obviously has to do something with, and he doesn't have a behavior specialist along with him, how does he know what to do? Take him to jail, take him to St., St. John's, take him to, you know, I don't know. But if there was a centralized place where they had somebody professionally could make an assessment and a judgment on those people, we could save a lot of time and be more efficient and more importantly, help the individual that needs the help. So I'm an advocate for professionalizing this whole operation as opposed to laymen or volunteers or whatever.
One additional quick question on coordinated entry. When you interview them, does that also include asking them what resources they do have? I know there's, there's disability, there's S S I, there's food. So there's resources that some of them or many of them already have.
Yes, they do ask about resources. They also ask about things like, do you have friends or family you could stay? You know, they're, have those types of conversations to look at what natural supports they might have in the community as well.
Okay. So you, you can breach that discussion.
We did have one comment come in. It's, it's more directed to where the conversation was going, which we can pick back up again. I have no issue with that. Anonymous attendee, it would really, it would be really great if there was a place that had housing and services in the same campus. I've seen such programs on documentaries. One in Phoenix is face-based. They say low-income housing would help, except low income isn't low dollars. Any other questions on these? If it's the pleasure of this board and you want to take all three, I think that's acceptable.
Okay. I was going to ask you that question. I make a motion to approve all three items, 13, 14, and 15.
Okay. We have a motion to approve items 13 to Community House, 14 to Emergency Support Shelter, and 15 to Family Health Center. Last questions? See none? We'll call for a vote. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Gina. And I'll, I'll say this, I've said it before, but I'll say it again, because I think it's important. This is the only place that you have an opportunity to sit and have these discussions with our department heads. I don't have a problem with it, because it just shows you how much our department heads know and how knowledgeable and capable they are. So I always, we're not going to let it turn into a yell fest, but, but I think discussions with them is important. And I think the, this commission is in, in favor of that. And so we always appreciate like a Gina or Susan or whoever is sitting up here, sitting and taking those, those questions and, and answering for you. They're much more knowledgeable about it than the three of us. So thank you.
Yep. Happy to do it.
I see my, Mr. Kaiser in the back, so I'm going to give you a number, 1.7 million. That was the engineer's estimate. I gave it last week, but you weren't here. Okay. Yeah. 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 You would ask about that. So we got that for you. Next Tuesday, we have Board of Health. Next Wednesday, on the 26th, you'll see Public Facilities District will be in and going over the master plan they have for the Expo Center. I think you'll, you'd find that pretty interesting. In April, we have a lineup. April, we sent out, we have rural public facilities money that comes in, because we're considered a rural county. It's, it's a tax rebate from a state tax that we get back to the county. We could use it for, it's, we like to see it used for infrastructure-type projects. We did in, in, like the water main extension and sewer extension in Cass Rock, we did that. We did the water plant in Kalama in, in improvements to that. So you'll see some of those projects come in. If you have interest, that would be one to 10. We asked for it and on April 23rd, we're going to have Department of Fish and Wildlife in, because we have some questions on that. And in the following week, right after Fish and Wildlife, he called you be back. So you guys have any updates? All good? Okay. We'll open it up. It's your meeting.
A quick follow-up on item number 11, where we were providing funds for Southwest Washington Services at the Phoenix House. One of the other points I want to make is that a couple of years ago, the Housing Authority came in and sought funds and received well over $100,000 to rehab the Phoenix House, because it was only seven years old. So that was kind of mind-boggling that it was at that state already. So I'm hoping, and I didn't bring it up at the session, but when you go in and provide services to people, it not only includes the, the personal, personal, but includes the environment and a sense of taking care of what you have and what we have provided them in society. So.
All right. I got something. This is real dull. Carrie, take a nap. So last, last, I think it was Wednesday, we were talking about the admin building over there needing new windows. You know, it's kind of funny, because I walk by there all the time and never even looked at them, but it's like, the whole building needs all new windows. And like we were talking about, or like you were talking about on Wednesday, you know, you're upgrading that building. It's going to cost some money. But man, dang, I, I was, I was really shocked at, when I went and looked at the other side, how it's, I don't know if you guys have been over there to look at that, up from the outside, but it's like the bottom floor, there's just a wall out there, you know, like a little sidewalk and it's kind of a trench.
Are you talking about like?
The far side from here.
The parking lot between W S U and?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
It just looks like kind of a miserable little spot. And I feel bad for our lawyers having to have their offices down there and have to look out at that. You know what I mean? I just, I feel bad for those legal guys and all their education and stuff. Get an office like that. It makes me feel bad for those guys. But another point that I was curious about, and it's minor, what happened to the weed control board? Are they in there? Cause the building looks empty now, right?
Weed control has been relocated over here downstairs.
Oh, okay. I was just curious about that one too. Well, I mean, we put a lot of money into it and more to go, I guess, but I'm always going to feel bad thinking about lawyers having a look at that, that wall.
Most of their office is going to be on second floor, but I, I can't swear to that.
They want windows.
Yeah.
Hey there, commissioners. My name's Kerry Hargan. And I've been, well, actually born right over here on the river. I was a boy scout on the Two River Valley up there. And grew up in a sea log truck in Mount St. Helens Forest. And here on January 27th, there's been actual ongoing, we own, outrun Mount St. Helens retreat on the 2500. And recently, during hunting season on, there's been speeders coming through, log trucks passing our, our residence there. It's a residential, private residential, which makes a difference on easement and the speed that the trucks can travel through. And my neighbors been telling me that they've been speeding, passing them and creating dangerous conditions. So I started putting up signs. Well, the other day, I walked probably 20 floors to get from my cabin up to the 2500 and one of C and C trucks come flying through where I couldn't even see that wall because of the dust, which is they're obligated to keep down. And the next truck come through, I started doing this. He acted like he is going to go on by me, then aimed his semi log truck right at me and chased me on my own property out into the grass. And when I called the sheriff department about it, the sheriff, when he contacted me, the first thing he did, you own a silver Tahoe? Do you own a red truck? He was bullying me from the start. And I do not understand why he was asked about the red truck, because one of the neighbors has been stopping these trucks speeding and chewing their butts. And warehouser been called from a nurse, from St. John's. They've called the heads of warehouses. They've told me, one of the professors from L C C's been passed and he stopped one of the trucks and one of the truck drivers went to fly out to like they're going to fight, ended up on his face. So I started putting up these signs. Well, then they, well, I put up signs back in hunting season too, and they were stolen. And I've been putting four by four signs, 15 miles an hour, no dust, which the reason why I did that is because I could travel through there at 15 without putting dust clear to the ceiling heights, which that's what was going on. So now, after the sheriff came and told me that the truck drivers told them that you don't own this property and you better just stay out of the way before you get ran over. Well, after hearing a semi committing a felony against me, then an officer just blowing me off, I ended up at the hospital with 133 beats a minute the next two days after that, because I was waking up, not being able to sleep, stressing out over this matter. And just yesterday, I, we, my neighbors and I have been quite interested in all the chatter the day after that guy tried to run me over, the scoop on the radio, they don't own that. Go ahead and do what you want, basically. Well, yesterday, now one, I know which, I don't know his name, but I know it's one of the warehouses equipment operators been flying through in the morning. He's been stating that, oh, that guy up there, he's got a gun. This is yesterday. He's been packing a gun and if I see him out there, I'm going to run him over. And that's the reason why I'm here today. I'm being bullied by Warehouser. It's come to me feeling that Warehouser married with the state and the sheriff department to the point where I feel it's a national security risk, the way things are going. Warehouses, I've been told by a lot of people that they ain't doing nothing against Warehouser, because they're too big. And I, I'm just totally disgusted with them. And if I've seemed upset, if you had someone try to run over you with a log truck, then get that kind of attitude from a sheriff, you wouldn't be very happy either. And that's, I don't know. That's where I'm at right now. I've put up signs and Warehouser, the other day, one of them, we, we could tell the sounds of the different vehicles where they stopped, stole some of my signs and went right into Warehouser. Well, there's a fresh skiff of snow. If they halfway scared, they could have went up and found what was stolen from us. And they're spreading lies that I'm vandalizing things, which I haven't been on Warehouser at all. They're making up and having that truck driver or one of their operators spreading rumors that I'm packing a gun and I'm going to run him over. That's just emboldening them even more. And Warehouser's not doing a thing. Matter of fact, they were talking about on the radio too, about setting up cameras. I wish they would, because then we could catch the vandals, Warehouser's vandals that are stealing my signs. And I've tried, my neighbors have tried. And this is a residential area out of their whole 50 miles. They only, less than one mile, they got slowed down to protect our, our investments. There, the dust is so bad and they do put gray stuff during the summer. Our investments, there, the dust is so bad and they do put gray stuff during the summer. But during these different spells, they don't do a thing and you try to call them and ask them and. And they won't do, as a matter of fact, they got real rude with me, so the deputy says, go ahead and. And uh keep documenting it with us, but they don't even give me, I don't have a case number for a fel- what I consider a felony. But I was just told one gentleman got twenty years, another one got eight years for using a commercial vehicle. To threaten someone's life. So what the sheriff department and I know I got stepsons that haven't helped my situation any. But uh the sheriff department actually had problems with them, but it wasn't me, I don't have nothing to do with that. And the way I've been treated has been bullying from the sheriff department and warehouser. And I'd like to see warehouser and them investigated and the deputy souvenir. He stated, oh yeah, I know the forest manager that told me that they're gonna take care of this. And what's on the radio, they ain't taking care of it, they're setting up cameras and gonna bust this guy and. And like I was telling you, now they're talking about running me over on my own property, I was on my own property. When that truck did it, that was my easement, I could show you the maps, I got all of it clear back to forty five. When uh warehouser got easement through Chaney's property, warehouser never owned this property. It's been from Chaney to Tacoma Land Company to Mount Saint Helens Elk Run Retreat. And it's never been there, so they've just had it easement through and. And they're bullying all of our landowners up there, other than the warehouser uh. Oh, union rep that's lived up there, he's the only one that uh hasn't stopped, talked or said anything. But there's been a nurse, a a college professor and all of them complaining to them about it. And nothing's been done other than me being harassed, I'm the big bully on the hill now, just for. I was voted in during the Elk Run Mount Saint Helens Retreats, I was for obvious reasons. Voted in as security, so basically I was trying to do my job when this happened. But I've had three stints put in in the last couple of years, so I've been trying to keep stress down.
Couple questions, uh Elk Run Retreat owns the road?
Yeah, we're, each one of us owns part of Elk Run, we we own to the center of the road, each. Each uh landowner owns a portion of it and there's four or five of them want me telling me that we need to do something. And we've tried talking to warehouser, so I've been doing signings and now it's all over their CBs how. Terrible that guy is and.
Did I, did I hear you say, maybe I didn't hear wrong, he- hear it right, that. Did they ha- uh agree to a speed limit there?
Oh, well, it was, there was ten mile an hour speed signs, when there's signs from when Mark Smith. And we've done the development of Elk Run Mount Saint Helens Retreat. There was still signs that stated right at the beginning of the road and up at the gate, it's less than a mile. Residential, it had ten miles an hour on it before that was a warehouser sign. That was ten miles an hour they posted before they started stealing them. And I put up couple down there during hunting season and we're and uh warehouser don't allow hunters. To be coming, using that easement because it's our private properties, so we've been turning them around and they're upset about that. They don't like have to go all the way out nineteen or up the thirty one hundred, so. We've been stopping them doing that, but none of us been done nothing to them other than tell them turn around and this ain't your access. So they're they're upset with us, but it's our rights and any one of our landowners do have the right. To stop one of those guys and tell them to behave. We had some of the hunters going through their forty five and this is steep grade. And then some of those loaded log trucks, they weren't stopping, they had to pass the guy because they're going too fast.
We're talking, and this is a one mile stretch of road?
Less than a mile, yeah. So out of their fifty miles, we were asking them and it could have been ten miles, but when I drove up through in the dust the other day. Fifteen miles an hour didn't kick it clear up in the air, so that's the reason why I added fifteen miles an hour. And now I'm the big bad boy in the.
Yeah, do they put any, I have a place in Idaho and and where there's logging activity and it's round residential. And I don't know what they put on the road, but they put on the road to control the dust, do they do any of that?
They do that during the summer, but when it washes off in the winter and you get two weeks of dry weather, they don't slow down. They're, they're doing thirty five, they, well, we can do thirty five, where else is thirty, this is residential, I keep telling them, residential. And if it's private residential, they gotta work with the landowners from what I understand in the Washington State DOT laws. They just can't go blowing through someone's private residential, but seeming warehouser's been doing it for all these years. And they they feel butt hurt, have to slow down just for us and if they would have stayed slow during the dust. We wouldn't have been doing anything, we didn't bother them while it was, you know, but it got so bad and the landowners there. You're just getting dusted out continuously and there's five of them that's gripe to me about it.
Yeah, so what I'm hearing is.
And and down at the.
Dust is your major issue?
That was part and speed.
Yeah.
And and illegal use of the easement, the warehouser hunters don't supposed to be there. The public don't supposed to be using it because it's private, there there's even signs saying trespassing if you enter. On their, on their signs.
How is it hunters are accessing this property without a gate key? What, is is there a?
A warehouser got a gate above us, which we were talking, we we are by that. We could have a landowners meeting and set up a gate and all that if we decided to as our private entity.
So does warehouser have an access gate past your property?
They have a locked gate past our property.
But is it an access gate for hunters?
No, they, there's signs saying no access for hunters.
So hunters are just going through your property and how are they, how are they, how are they getting into warehouser if there's no access gate?
Some of them have keys and some of them, they're just warehouses leaving the gate wide open, the workers go and leave them up and they're taking advantage of it. One of them came so fast through a couple of times, he was doing forty, forty five, just keep from us. Stay, stop, he just flying and we finally caught up to him on the nineteen mi- mile. One of our, my neighbors and I followed him down to the nineteen mile and and told him he's trespassed off from it. And I appreciate that C and C truck, I'd like to find out, I told that warehouser. Forest manager Albert Kessel. That I wanted that C and C truck trespassed off from the, our portion of the twenty five hundred for trying to run me over. And I'd like to know if that's been done, they've been dragging their feet all along. And there's, there, everybody says there's cameras on those trucks. Everybody except for the the cops said, oh, well, there was no camera. And the both of the drivers that's got the same year of trucks is our cameras don't lie. So that officer hasn't gave me a straight deal or warehouser. They they, with that driver or one of their workers sitting there telling, I'm gonna run him over. That's making it twice as dangerous, emboldening other people to act against me, in my opinion.
Do you know what the name of the sheriff was you talked to?
That was Souvenir.
Souvenir, okay.
Officer Souvenir. That's all I, all he's told me.
And then, did you say you talked to this uh forest manager?
Yeah, he, he caught me, are you patrolling? Yeah, I'm patrolling, I ended up putting Elk Run. Uh, security on my truck because I was basically the the one that everybody calls for security up there. There was an old man, one of the neighbors who were harassing on top, who they call, me, to get him out of there and. Every time one of the neighbors leave, they call me and ask me to make sure their place is secure and I've been doing it for twenty years up there. But we haven't really had to do much until these guys are just starting to endanger it and getting emboldened. For I don't know why, why has it gotten so bad in the last year? And. And I'm just trying to help my neighbors and me protect our easement. And I don't like being put in the fear of my life.
Yeah. What we basically have available here is we don't really have authority over other elected officials, so. It's, we can't tell sheriffs or we don't tell the auditors or assessors how to do their their job. What we can do is express uh concerns of the public and some of that, just that expression of concern will will carry some. Some weight, I don't know what we can do with warehouser, but.
Yeah, everybody says warehouser's too big to go against, that seems to be, I'd be investigating the national security risk.
Yeah, it, it's a little distressing that they're talking about less than a mile of road, you think they'd honor a speed limit and just. Do it.
Well, I can tell you that warehouser's wood security makes sure that as a permit holder, you're enforcing their rules on their land.
What's that?
I said, I can tell you that the warehouser wood security, as they're patrolling up there for the permit holders that are, you know, have access to their land. They make sure that that we're upholding our end of that contract, that we're obeying the speed limit and have the equipment we're supposed to have, so they, they should understand.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
You have a lot different experience with warehouser security than I've had. I don't have much faith in warehouser security.
Well, no, I'm just saying that they expect everybody else to abide by the rules.
Yeah, no, I'm.
Yeah, actually, I got one of warehouses, uh five alive things right here. What they're producing for their safety, that's uh. Where is it? Right here, and they got twenty five miles an hour on their road. Is what they're telling their guys, if you'd like to see it.
Or like the log truck drivers and stuff?
Oh, for their their hunters and all that.
I got, oh, okay, I got you, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, that's right, here, traveled twenty five mile an hour or less on the right of ways, operating traffic and. I had a gentleman go through quite a bit of information after the sheriff said, you don't own that land and you can't do this. I got everything back to forty five, I. It took me a while, we had to go clear to the archives in Olympia to get some of this paperwork, but. Uh there's no denying warehouser never owned that piece of property, they have the easement through. But they need to obey the private, now that it's a residential area, they need to abide by it.
Well, I guess I don't know if the sheriff won't help you, I guess I don't know.
Well, every, that's what everybody says, they're so worthless anymore, they don't help anybody, and that's what the word I get. And I see just about everybody I've talked to, oh, they don't do a damn thing anymore, period.
Pardon my ignorance when it comes to easements, Rick, maybe you know the answer to this, um are easements indefinite? Can you cancel an easement on somebody?
Not if you lock them out of their property.
It's a.
It's illegal to landlock.
They wouldn't be landlocked, they they talked about, when I was talking about, well, we can't fix it, we'll go out nineteen mile. But yeah, they, it was, the easement I read was without time. Assessment, but if there's abuse of the easement, there, and it was stating that it's harder to. Keep that easement throughout time because of. Uh abuse of the easement and stuff like that and warehouses, in my opinions, made it a dangerous condition. On the twenty five hundred by their rhetoric and not refusing to talk to their contractors. But that contractors are sitting there today and too, oh, they don't own that property, well, the timber manager says he's gonna handle it. And instead, I'm here and they're setting up cameras, we're gonna bust that guy and now this another one's gonna run me over. I've been listed as CB, I haven't been talking to or saying a thing because I need to be recording this for evidence. For the harassment and bullying that I'm getting from warehouser.
Have you talked to an attorney at all?
I tried one in Seattle, but yeah, they, I don't wanna go against warehouser.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I would guess that if warehouser had another out, you could probably do a civil action. Get rid of that easement, like the easement uh I had that started with IP and and now Sierra Pacific owns it. I don't think they could cancel because it's my only access to my my property.
And you look straight across the street from what I'm talking about is Eco Park. Well, Eco Park's got the same easement through there, he's got a five mile an hour sign. And you open and close the gate every time you go down through there and it's the same easement going to Old Camp Baker. That's what that was, reason why they built the road through Chaney's property is get down to Camp Baker. Back in the forty fifties. But it's just amazing me how the sheriff department treated me, though, that was just. They ignorant to the law to start with and making judgment from the truck drivers. And yeah, I was upset when the second one come through, I'm sure I was, yeah, you're gonna tell that truck driver not to come back through here. Because he's trespassed. And I have the right to trespass, speeders or wreck, if someone tried to run you over, you should be able to trespass them off your private property. And easement through there.
Yeah.
And we all as landowners up there because of the covenants, it's stated, any one of us can take action. In whatever needs to be taken care of up there. And that's all I try to do and they're up there making lies about me, telling I'm packing guns, well, this is the way I looked when I. Just about got ran over. And if I would have tripped, I would have been ran over, period. And I'm retired, I've ended up in Germany serving by the time I was seventeen, I've been outgoing. I planted Fong Lake Burn up there in Mount Saint Helens back when I was fourteen, I've been at. Avid work in my, I grew up in sea log truck, I ran that twenty five hundred ever since I was this tall. I witnessed them spraying Agent Orange all over the logging roads, which I have making me wonder about the elk. Because Vietnam, they sprayed Agent Orange over there and I'm being told that they gotta clean up the DDT and they're the. Dioxin or whatever it is that kills the plants there, they were, when I was six, uh seven. I was sitting in my dad's log truck watching them, two guys on the back of a great big water tanker. I don't even think they had masks spraying that Agent Orange up and down, it was on the nineteen oh one when I seen them doing it. And all they say, well, we haven't done that lately, but all of our grouse died off at that time and. Yeah, and I'm a little disgusted.
What I would ask you is to make sure our clerk has your information, we'll do a little research and. We'll do a little research and, and see what kind of suggestions we can come up with and, and try to help, although I think we're, to be honest with you, to be totally honest with you, it's pretty limited at what we can do, but we will, we will take a look at it and, and try to help if we can.
I appreciate it.
Just make sure our clerk has contact information so we know how to get it back to you.
All right.
Okay.
Appreciate it. Thank you, guys.
Thank you for coming by.
Thank you.
Where, where were they?
In the, in the office?
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Have a good day.
You, too. You.
Anything else today?
Not on my list.
Okay. As always, there's only three of you left, but we appreciate you participating. We always, uh, enjoy the public discourse. I think it's good for us. So.